Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a few housekeeping items before we begin. Please turn off your phones and other electronic devices. That would be great. And also know that Portland Public Schools Education Media Services alone is authorized to record this forum. Audience members may not use any type of image or sound recording device during the forum. And the goal of the forum being to listen to the candidates. We have limited time. We have 90 minutes. We'll use it toward that goal. And if you would also please hold your applause until the very end of the forum. That would be appreciated. I'm going to have a few seconds here before we start the forum itself. And I'd like to take that silent time to observe a moment of silence for those who have been affected by recent acts of violence in our country and in the greater Portland area. So just a few moments for that. Thank you. Now we can begin. Welcome to our candidate forum for the School Board of Portland Public Schools. I'm Malika Heding from the League of Women Voters, and I am your moderator. We acknowledge and thank Community and Parents for Public Schools for partnering with us to present this forum. We also thank Portland Public Schools for its help in presenting the forum. The forum is being televised from the Blanchard Education Service Center by Portland Public Schools Education Media Services. A schedule for later replays of the forum on Comcast Cable Channel 28 appears on the League's website, L W V P D X dot org. The candidates in this forum are running in the May 21st special election. In addition to this school board election, the ballot will include candidates for other local school boards and offices, as well as three ballot measures. Voters can look to the League Women Voters of Portland Nonpartisan Voters Guide for ballot measure summaries and candidates' answers to questions. From the Voters Guide on our website, you can get this information, and you can get a hard copy of the Voters Guide at Multnomah County Libraries or at the Elections Office. Finally, to streamline your ballot research, go to vote four one one dot org to find information for only the candidates and measures on your ballot. If you've not yet registered to vote, the deadline is April 30th. You've got a little time. Election Day is May 21st, 2011. Ballots will be mailed to voters on May 3rd, and completed ballots must be received at an official drop-off site no later than 8:00 PM on May 21st. Now let's move on to our forum. Candidates for our school board run from geographic zones but are elected at large. In other words, you will vote for one candidate from each zone when you fill in your ballot. Now let me introduce the candidates. From right to left, in the order they will appear on the ballot. I'm looking at a left-to-right situation here. So I'm going to start here. Zone four, Martine Gonzalez and Steve Buell. Zone five, Pam Knowles. Zone six, Tom Kurler and Dave Morrison. For the first part of our forum, we will ask the candidates questions developed by the League and our partner, Community and Parents for Public Schools. These questions will address four themes. Then we'll move on to audience questions and end with each candidate's closing statement. The candidates will each have 60 seconds to respond to a question. Our timekeepers here will hold up signs to notify when the speaker has 15 seconds remaining and when the speaker must stop speaking. Audience questions are an essential part of our forum. So if you've not already filled in a question card, ask a League member standing in the aisle for a card. You see them holding the three-by-five cards there. Write your question and return the card to a League member, who will give it to me. Volunteers will be collecting the questions for the next 15 minutes. So you've got a little time to write your question and pass it in. The first round of questions deals with the candidate's personal motivation to be a school board member. And we're going to, I will change the rotation for who answers the question first for each question. Question number one. What is the seminal event in your life that caused you to seek this office? Starting with Mr. Gonzalez.
I actually ran a few years back against David Wine, and I saw the, there was about 21 candidates that turned up, I think, in that election, about 12 years back, I want to say. And I saw that, I didn't see a whole lot of diversity in regards to that. And I saw also a lack of diversity also in terms of the experience, not only ethnically or racially, but also in terms of the experience in different settings. And for me, I think my motivation, one part, was bringing a different voice to the board, a different perspective, and also, you know, the fact that my children have gone to schools, important public schools, and have different levels of achievement and success in those schools. That's going to confuse me, but I'm going to stop right there.
Thank you. Steve Buell.
Thank you for coming out this evening. The seminal event, probably for this school board race, probably happened in 1975. That's when I first went down to a school board meeting, and I was a young, little radical school teacher, and went down and looked and said, wow, I've taught seven years, and these guys don't have, don't seem to really understand what's going on in the schools. And so I've been fighting since then, since 1975. I ran, was on the school board from '79 to '83, and I've run a couple times lately, and I'm running again because I think we still have a need for people who have that really good, solid educational background.
Thank you. Pam Knowles.
Thank you for having us here tonight. The reason that I initially ran for the school board four years ago, and why I'm running for reelection now, is that I firmly believe that education is the most important determining factor in someone's life. And four years ago, I saw that the district was having issues around graduation rates, achievement gap, equity. And I thought that I could bring the skills that I had in my background as a teacher, a lawyer, a businessperson, to the board, like Martine, to provide a different voice for the board and help things turn around. And I think that we've, over the last four years, seen a lot of improvement, and I'm anxious to continue with that work.
Thank you. Tom Kurler.
Maybe the seminal event is when I was born, the last of six boys. And I've been fighting for social justice ever since. But truly, I think there's nothing more important in our community than our public schools. Recently, maybe the, when the district and the teachers couldn't get together, and we walked away from an opportunity to get federal money, that kind of kicked me in the rear, wanting to bring everybody together and focus on doing the right thing.
Thank you. David Morrison.
Seminal event for me was when I found out that the schools are using microwave radiation with Wi-Fi routers. I brought my complaints to the board, and the board's handling of it was actually reprehensible. I was a parent with safety concerns. I've done a lot of research since. I've spoken to scientists around the world. And Wi-Fi should not be in schools. It's not safe to expose kids for six hours a day to microwave radiation. So I'm here to hopefully open a debate or discussion and hopefully get this technology removed. Like France, we just found out a couple weeks ago, has decided that they are taking the Wi-Fi out of their schools because they're adopting the precautionary principle, which Portland has on the books, but is not using.
Thank you. For the second question, we'll start with Steve Buell. What are your top policy priorities as a school board member?
The school board, the school board has three jobs, a school board member does. The first job is that you are, you hire and you supervise the superintendent. And they do a nice job there. I really like Carol Smith. She's a marvelous woman, but I think they kind of isolate her out, not just the board, but the district does. And the second thing is to make the schools run smoothly and do at least support the schools running smoothly. And it's kind of not really running that smoothly, in my opinion. And the third thing that is your responsibility is you're a representative of the community. You're an elected member of the community. And your job, one of your main jobs, is to bring forward things from the community and things that you do and initiatives that you bring forward to make the school district better. And that's an absolute zero, basically, from the school board. They just don't do that. And they, and so the community gets shut out and cut off.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles.
Thank you. My three big priorities are equity across the district. We have been working hard on racial educational equity policy, which I helped along with Director Gonzalez to initiate. That's been very important for us, to make sure that we have the differentiate, differentiate our resources, to make sure that those students who need those resources the most have them. I also feel it's very important that we have the absolute best teacher in every classroom for our students. And I'm happy to say that over the last four years, we've, together with the teachers, developed an evaluation tool that helps us help teachers be more successful, and as a result, our students are succeeding. And then finally, I think one of our biggest issues is going to be funding. It just continues to be an issue for the district, and I've been working hard with the district and in Salem and with our legislators to talk about how we can provide more funding for schools.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
Good question. And when I sat down with Commissioner, Congressman Blumenauer, let him know I was running, and he, all those you might know, he's rather intense, and he poked his finger at me and said, what are you going to do? And so, you know, what can a board member do, is your question? And so in terms of making sure that every student has an opportunity to, to the equity question, three things. One is make sure that there is absolutely a top-notch educational leader, otherwise known as principals, in every single building. And we can do that. We've got some really good principals in this district, but we don't have 78 of them, and we need 78. Number two, an emphasis on innovation, technology, and curriculum. And number three, integrating into local economy so that the skills and the knowledge are transferred to the students, and then they can have jobs when they get out.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
I'd like to see the issue of the health and safety of our kids elevated to the most important issue. As it stands, they're, they're at risk for six hours of microwave exposure. And I'd also like to see some changes to the curriculum. That would include safer cellphone use. The cellphone is the most dangerous item that a kid has. Kids under 20 are 500% more liable for brain tumors than children and adults. And I think that this needs to be taught in the schools, along with safe sex, tobacco, alcohol, and drugs.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
I think in order to talk about like newer priorities in that sense, I think that we have to, you know, look at in regards to what we have done. And we put in place in the past years, again, as Director Knowles mentioned, you know, an equity policy. I think that we need to go farther and deepen that work and actually make it more operational so that in real practice, we use it constantly to be able to drive and create programs that actually deal with closing the achievement gap. The other part of it is related to that, is making sure that we put back an affirmative action policy to be able to look at, you know, diversifying our workforce. Because if we are not looking at, you know, having people that actually reflect the student population and that are culturally competent to these students, I think that we continue to go in the same route. And the other one is guaranteed professional development for teachers, because I think that's one of the areas that we have made some initial things.
Thank you. Next, we will discuss student achievement. And for this question, we'll start with Ms. Knowles. What are you prepared to do to provide more support for high schoolers who, while not at risk, have enough trouble with the subject to impede their ability to graduate on time?
Have what? Would you repeat the last part of that?
Yes, I'll repeat the whole question. What are you prepared to do to provide more support for high schools, for high schoolers who, while not at risk, have enough trouble with the subject to impede their ability to graduate on time?
I think there are several things that we can do for high school students. Some, one of, of course, that we already did was the high school system design to make sure that we had a core curriculum in every single high school. One of the things that we included in that was career technical education, but we've been unable to fund that part of it. And it really is, I think, one of the most important things that we can do, both for, to engage our students more in high school and also as an equity issue for those students who don't want to go to college. We aren't really providing them with the kinds of training, the opportunities that they should be able to have in high school. So for me, career technical education is something that I think that we should focus more on. And then, of course, other kinds of things also hold our students in school, and the arts being one of those. I'm very excited that we're going to have the arts for our younger children, but I think we want to make sure that we're also focused on the arts for our high school students as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
Certainly. So one thing I'd like to do is get a full day of high school back. We've taken about three weeks of high school out of cumulative, out of the schedule, and I think, I think we can do that. And then replicate some things that are working really, really well in the district. As an example, the Advanced Scholar Program at Franklin is working really, really well, where students come in and they sign a pledge, they're going to take four AP classes, and they're going to graduate, and they're going to go to college. Also, I would agree with Pam about the notion of getting the local economy more integrated into our schools, and kids can get turned on to core subjects through, through an ability to look in the different industries that are here. So all of the above.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
I think more of a focus on things that are fun and things that are creative, like more focus on the arts, particularly music. I think if every student took a musical instrument, there would be a huge sense of community. They would be working together on concerts and have a special relationship with the instrument that you just don't find in any other subject. Also, similar with the arts, I think the arts should be the last thing to go and not have to be funded by a special election.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
I think, you know, over the past four years, one of the things that I, that I supported one was the, the whole idea of we need to be able to identify in regards to our students, what are the needs, and then begin to address it by, and we've done that by supporting like ninth-grade academies, supporting programs like Avid, Gear Up, others that are actually preparing that. And we're also investing. And I think that we'll support continuing investment in regards to community partners that actually look at supporting those students that are being identified that need additional help. Not that they're, you know, failing, but that there's going to be initial help to be able to support that. And to support the efforts that are being made in regards to providing mentors for those students, and also invest some real money to be able to make sure those students are successful.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
I kind of come at this problem a little different angle. The dropout problem isn't just in the high school. It's not really a high school dropout problem. It's almost really a middle school dropout problem. We've got this mess going in our middle schools with this really terribly weak middle school education across the district from school to school. We can't even figure out which direction we're going. Are we going middle schools? Are we going K8s? We were going to, when we went to K8 some time ago, then we turned around, and we're going to have this K8 initiative. Where did that go? Off in the ether someplace? I'm not exactly sure. But if you're going to have these really poor middle schools, then you're going to end up with these really poor graduation rates. I taught in Vancouver for 10 years. It's unbelievable what they have in their middle schools, they're able to put in, and how they approach the whole middle school education. I'd love to talk to any of you who'd like sometime and show you the difference.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Kurler. High achieving students make fewer gains overall than other students. How can we challenge those students and give them an education at their level and rate every day?
By committing to it. And committing to every single student in the district. By using technology and innovation, allowing differentiated learning, by bringing project-based learning to them. You do, you do that, and we can succeed with every student.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Well, I, my concern here is the health and safety of kids in our schools. And I would like to see microwave radiation removed from the schools. There have been some studies that have shown that cognition, memory, and other biological systems are affected by that. And I think that once it's removed, there will be, there'll be more, less problems with some of, some of the kids who are electro-sensitive, probably don't know they are yet because there's not enough information about this. But, but there should be an improvement once it's removed.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yes. High achieving students make fewer gains overall than other students. How can we challenge those students and give them an education at their level and rate every day?
That's a recent discussion. I mean, I think that one of the, the recent discussions, I think, that came to the board, in particular within the discussion on Jefferson, was the whole thing in regards to what are we doing with tech students and how are we supporting access? I think a, you know, the starting point, I think, is already there in regards to looking at establishing already a school with the potential to grow and provide an opportunity for those students that actually need more challenge. I think that the model is there. We need to be able to strengthen it and support it more.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
First of all, I challenge that premise of the question that high achieving students make fewer gains than lower achieving students. And I don't know where, how we're defining gains here. A couple words on high achieving students. One of the things that messes up kids in Portland is the testing, because the testing moves to the, everybody to the middle. So the Oakes test, you're trying to pass the benchmarks. So the teacher is rewarded for getting kids just below the middle into the middle so they can pass. The kids who are much faster, ready to move along, they don't get to move along because the focus is on those middle kids. And the kids who really can't read, they don't get the help they need either, because the focus is back on those middle kids. One of the things that I've been working for a lot with an organization I'm part of called Oregon Save Our Schools is to have the district begin to manage the testing way better than it does.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles.
Well, I, first I would say contrary to what Steve has said, that those students who are doing well have the ability to move ahead in any class. It's very important that we provide our teachers with professional development to help them differentiate that instruction for students as they go through the different grades. And then the other, to speak to high school students in particular, the offer of AP, IB, our dual credit courses with our universities, the opportunity for students to move into the community colleges with our partnerships with PCC offers them more opportunities. I also think that it, again, going back to our CTE discussion, I think that our, our ability to partner with the business community and provide internships and work opportunities for those students would also be something that would be interesting to high achieving students. So lots of opportunities there still.
Thank you. The volunteers are collecting the last of the question cards now. So if you have a question, please hand it to the volunteer nearest you. And I'm going to be reading them, so please use handwriting that would make your third grade teacher proud.
That won't be mine, then.
The next two questions concern structure. And the first to answer this one will be Mr. Morrison. Since funding continues to be constrained, what are the core essential functions of our school system that should be protected?
Well, I think the health and safety of our children should be paramount to anything. And I think we need to take a look at the science. I have a huge amount of science. Science is irrefutable at this point. It's been replicated many times. And I think we need to get together with a group of scientists, some politicians, some doctors, and go through the material and make an informed decision as to what to do with this technology in our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
You know, the, we're in the, in the business of serving students. So the core essential function for us is to make sure that we have an adequate structure that supports, that supports student learning. So in that sense, you know, that we have the personnel qualified and ready to serve those students and be able to have also buildings that are adequate enough to be able to support those, those students. In addition to that, I think it's important to keep in mind that there is an operational component to it that needs to be part of that, and as well as the administrative part, because I don't think that we can say only, this is the, the only thing that is part of it. We are all, there is a system that needs to be in place to make sure that we deliver on the quality education that's that we want.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
No way to answer that in a minute, but I can say that the school district doesn't have a plan either. I don't think they could answer it if you sat here all day with them and have them come up with what they say is the educational philosophy of the Portland Public Schools, what it is we want to do in class after class. Have a strategic plan, but it's not any good. Bounces all over the place. You've got, what, what we need to do is come up with a real good, solid educational plan for the Portland Public Schools. What is it we're really trying to do in grade after grade? What is it we're trying to set up? We just kind of move from crisis to crisis management. And then once you get to that point, then you stabilize the district with enrollment and transfer, and you stabilize just the structure of the district, and you stabilize also the grade configurations. Then once you've done that, then that, you've got a foundation you can build on. But we have no idea where we're going.
Thank you.
We just don't.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles.
I do.
Well, I guess we're not agreeing tonight, are we, Steve?
I guess not. Guys on both sides of me.
The district has a strategic framework that we've been working under for the last five years, and because of that, our graduation rate is nine points higher than it was when I took, when I got on the board four years ago. Our achievement gap is narrowing. Our students in our lowest performing schools are doing better than they have in the past. To answer your question, and I also would note that we also have the milestones that we have been working with for the same period of time, and our students continue to do better and better and better on those milestones. And that's why our district is doing better today than it was four years ago. Core essential functions, back to your question. Class size is important. Professional development to make sure that our teachers are able to be the best teachers in front of our students. And a full schedule, I think that Tom mentioned that before, I also think that a full high school schedule is also something that we should protect.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
Sure. Yeah, the bottom line is adults interacting with kids. So that, at the core, that's what it is. And in a, an era of constrained resources, we constantly have to be looking at, how can we deliver that better? And so that's where I've come back to, I think, having really, really good educational leaders, where they're building a team, where there is a core ethic of continual improvement, where teachers are helping teachers, and the whole focus on, is on what can we do better tomorrow than what we did today. where teachers are helping teachers, and the whole focus on, is on what can we do better tomorrow than what we did today? So that's, I think, we just have to continually think about that and act upon it.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Gonzalez. What are the strengths and weaknesses of the Portland Public Schools Equity Program? And specifically, what will you do to improve it?
You know, the strength and weakness lies on the fact that for the first time in the history of the district, there's actually a racial equity policy in place that actually calls out for a plan to close the achievement gap and to target resources to address and to make it happen. The weakness on that is that I think it's still in the early stages. And we need to continue that momentum by continuing to elect, you know, some of the same people, by the way. But, because clearly we have different philosophies here on this table. And to be able to then, you know, look at, make it operational. I mentioned the affirmative action plan is one of those things. We already put a contracting equity, you know, policy in place. We are moving in the right direction, and we've seen the results. But it's taken a concerted effort to make it happen. It's taken real commitment and culture change. Where we value every student that we have before us.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
I don't think we have a difference in that. I fought for equity since I first ran for the school board in 1976. I wrote the desegregation plan along with Herb Cuthbert and I for the entire school district, which eliminated the institutionalized racism in the school. I worked for a long, long time with the blog PPS Equity, and I probably started to a huge degree, a lot of the stuff dealing with getting the school district to deal with equity in the campaign that I ran in 2005. So I don't think we have a difference. Our difference really is here. It's that the equity plan is built around testing. And testing is not something you build an equity plan on. Because it doesn't, A, it doesn't measure the kids correctly. Testing is such a, in fact, in and of itself, it's inequitable. And so you don't put an equity plan and base it there. And that's the problem. That's the difference that I have. And the second thing is, yes, we have an equity policy, but what are the next steps? Where do they fit in with that plan, which we don't have?
Thank you. Ms. Knowles.
Thank you. Our equity plan is built around trying to make sure that every student has the best education they possibly can. And us providing equitable resources across the district, not equal resources, but equitable resources to make sure that every student has the same opportunity to be successful. And I think that, as Martine said, we are moving in that direction. And I think that our success of our students in some of our lower performing schools is showing that, that our differentiation of resources through our racial educational equity plan have made a huge difference. We still have a long way to go. We're not all the way there. Like Martine says, I think that the board that we currently have is doing a great job moving us in that direction. I also would say that our, our district needs to continue the training and the work that we're doing with every single person in this district, including the board, teachers, principals, administration, everyone on, through our courageous conversations work in making sure that we understand what educational equity is.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
So the strength is that we have one and that we as a community have, we recognize the deracial and social and economic injustices that are, that are out there and somewhat inherent in our society. The weakness is, is that it becomes, you throw the word out there so often, it becomes jargon. And that we don't focus where the rubber hits the road, on the schools, and getting the best talent in the schools that are needed the most. And, you know, we can talk a lot, but where the rubber hits the road is at the schools, and that's where we need key leadership and key talent.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
One of the problems, as I see it with equity, is that some of the schools in the poorer neighborhoods are, have cellphone towers right next, either on them or right next to them. And like, take Boise Elliott. They're sitting right next to two cellphone towers. And I think there needs to be some plan for remediation of some of these buildings so that it protects the kids from, from the microwave radiation. It's considered if you're within eight hundred feet of a cellphone tower, you're in a, you're in a danger zone. And there have been many epidemiological studies to back this up. So these, these buildings should be remediated so that they protect, that the buildings can protect the kids from exposure.
Thank you. We have two more questions before the audience questions, and these two deal with staff. And Steve Buell will be the first to respond to this one. Teacher quality is a major factor. Some say the most important factor in student achievement. What will you do to maintain and improve teacher quality in Portland Public Schools, especially in high-needs schools?
The corporate education reform movement tries to get you to think that the teacher quality is, can be improved by bringing in things from someplace else, like Salem, or some, bring in things, programs from Washington DC, or bring in programs from Duluth, or wherever. That's not how you improve your teaching quality in your schools. The way you do it is you do it in those schools. You figure out what the problems are in those schools. In fact, that's how you reform and make your schools better anyway. You go down into those schools and you say, what are the problems here? Which teachers need help? What kind of help do they need? That doesn't get done with programs from someplace else. That gets done by freeing up those schools to do that, and we're not doing that. We're, we have a tendency to go top-down mandates, top-down mandates, and testing, testing, testing. I've talked to so many teachers who are, in fact, one last night, two nights ago, she said, I'm about out of here. This is driving me crazy how they're treating teachers. You don't get good quality if you treat teachers the way we are. Thank you.
Ms. Knowles.
Well, of course, teacher quality is, is the most important thing because the best teacher in every classroom is the most important thing. What can we do to improve teacher quality? There are several things. The professional development that we already set aside every week for our teachers at the schools is very important. We work with the union to develop that professional development so that it is school-specific. We also are currently working with the chalkboard project and with a couple of other districts within the region and with PSU to look at, how are we recruiting teachers? And how are we training the teachers before they actually get to us? This is very important work that we're doing with them. So professional development, working with teacher training institutions, and just trying to make sure we have the very best teacher in front of every class.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
So the district has a mentoring program that is highly effective, where star teachers can take time off and mentor teachers. I think that's, we need to expand that. In fact, in this current budget, that's getting expanded. I think that's a great idea. There needs to be a culture in every building where all the teachers and with the, with the principal are, are working together. We need to support teachers. Teachers need to support teachers. We need to give teachers time to support teachers. And it absolutely needs to be focused in it. And if it is, and if it's institutionalized, then I think it will, we'll see very good results.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Well, I pretty much agree with everything that Steve said. And the only thing I can add would be to, just to let them teach. You know, they're imprisoned by the testing and all these various charts and graphs and prospectuses. But I also think that teachers need, we need seminars to, to bring teachers really up to date as to the hazards of cellphone use. And teachers need to be able to talk to kids and parents about the effects of cellphones. There's a, you can measure the effects of a cellphone call. Ninety seconds on a cellphone causes changes in the brain for one hour afterward that can be measured. And parents need to know this. They're now saying that kids should not use a cellphone except in a dire emergency. This is not known here, but, you know, in France.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Mr. Gonzalez.
I think it's already been stated. I think what we, we have to look at in regards to what we're already doing and what we have done in the, in the past years is, one, to continue to support in regards to professional development. Two is, is to support those things that work well. And, you know, teachers that are mentoring others is one of those things that had been mentioned. You know, with a fifteen to one ratio that has been proposed. But the other part of it is learn from the, the learning, the educational learning communities that are being created, like a Roosevelt, you know, high school, where you see what they call instructional coaches. Master teachers are basically helping others within the building themselves. And the other is to continue to work the schools of education as we are currently doing to be able to have better placements and to follow through with those placements with the student teachers. And to support programs like the Portland Teacher Program, to support other programs that are already trying to improve the educational quality of students, of teachers as they're coming in to the practice.
Thank you. For this question, we'll begin with Ms. Knowles. What are your thoughts about educational options such as alternative schools, charter schools, and special focus programs? Do they strengthen or weaken the school system as a whole?
Well, my thought is that they strengthen the school district as a whole because we have all kinds of students who are in Portland Public Schools, and I think it's important that we serve them and their needs. So we have special focus programs. We have arts programs. We have wonderful career technical education that's happening at Benson. We have our middle college program at Jefferson High School and many other opportunities aligned for some of our students, lead for students. There are many, many opportunities for students to take advantage of all the different focus programs that we have. And so it allows us to serve a broader range of students, and it also hopefully helps us keep more students in school through to graduation.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler.
You know, I, I think diversity is a good thing. And in terms of charter schools, for instance, or alternative schools, what, what I like about them is that then we can learn. And if things are working in some of these schools, then we should integrate it into the rest of our schools. So it comes back to continual culture of, you know, how can we do better tomorrow than we did today? And having a diversity of approaches allows us to look at that and say, that's working. Let's go do that. Or, no, that's not working. And when they're not working, they, you know, we should shut them down as well. So it goes both ways.
Thanks. Mr. Morrison.
Well, I, I think it definitely helps. And once again, I'm going to agree with Tom. You take a school like MLC and their project-based learning style, and we can look at that and introduce some, some of that in, in all schools, I think. And anywhere, you know, you see something where a program that, that's working, you can, you can take that and apply it to all the schools if, you know, if it works.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Our goal is to, is to provide the best educational experience for, for a student in order for it to be able to succeed and to be able to be prepared to advance to the next level. I think that the, the options that we have, and there are many options, provide that opportunity for the diversity of student population, the needs of the student populations that are there. I having to have a son that is sitting, that is standing over there in the back that attended Benson High School. And for him, you know, Benson High School, which is a focus school, was the best option. My other children attended, you know, Jefferson High School. One graduated from, from Lincoln. One actually dropped out of Lincoln High School and then graduated from Rosemary Anderson Alternative School. So for me, in my experience, it helps to have that, that broad participation of, of different providers to be able to then work jointly with the district to serve the best we can of students.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
Yes, Martine, that was, yeah, I certainly agree with you. I do have a little problem with charter schools. If you're going to have charter schools, they need to be set up correctly, funded correctly, come from the right people. The whole, the charter school movement in this country has become absolutely horrible, closing down public school after public school after public school. So we've got to be careful, and one of the reasons I'm running for the school board is because we're kind of moving in a lot of the educational reform, corporate education reform directions. You can see the early beginnings with the testing, and our defense of the testing, for instance, is a really good example. The Cleveland High School kids are going out here on Thursday, I guess, arguing against the testing. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that you can do. But the other thing is, we need a good, well, we need a good, solid, well-rounded education in each of our schools. We don't have that now. We need to do that. Then when kids choose these other options, you know they're not fleeing the neighborhood school. They're going because that option is good for them, some of which we have, like Benson, Devincie, and MLC. Those are excellent places. In fact, we should probably take a cap off of Benson.
Thank you. Now we turn to questions submitted by the audience, and I'm going to read them twice just to make sure you, they're clear. If you could pick one federal or state education policy that you believe does more harm than good and should be ignored or challenged, which would you pick? I'll read that one more time. If you could pick one federal or state education policy that you believe does more harm than good and should be ignored or challenged, which would you pick? And we'll start with Mr. Kurler.
That's a, that's a tough, that's a tough question. You know, I mean, one, one could make the argument that we're spending, we're sending a lot of money to Washington DC and we're not necessarily getting it back. So I, I would question frankly our whole federal education funding scheme that, that taxes us, goes through the halls of Washington DC and then gets spit back on us. I think we could probably do a better job with the money ourselves.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison.
Well, I think the funding of, the installation of the Wi-Fi is problematic because money is allotted to the schools and then, by the government, and then it's given to Cisco Systems to put in the Wi-Fi. And if you choose not to, if you choose not to install the wireless technology, you don't get the, you don't get the government funding. At least, that's my understanding. So I think that that's sort of a, a little bit of a bribe type of policy.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
I think any, any federal policy that, that ties funding to an action that leads to, to the closure of the school should be disregarded, or funding that ties basically the, says that the only way that you're going to be able to do this or get this money is that, you know, by closing the school or, or the other. I believe on the accountability part in regards to those things. But I also, I am clear that you do not quit investing in a school because they didn't meet benchmark. To the contrary, and I think that the board has moved in this direction, is we need to look at those schools that are not beating benchmark and be able to invest more on those schools on a long-term basis.
Thank you. Mr. Buell.
Well, not too long ago, we just had No Child Left Behind, and now we have the waiver, which is taking care of the problems. No, it hasn't taken care of the problems. A waiver is actually worse than No Child Left Behind in a lot of ways. Basically, it hasn't taken care of the problems at all. We're still gonna, we're still gonna label our schools. We're still gonna do all the testing. We're still gonna do all the things that people rejected from No Child Left Behind. But what I, what I think we should kind of negate is the common core. Most of you probably aren't even aware to some degree what it is, the common core, new standards. standards. What was wrong with the Oak standards that we had? There are standards, why did we, are we now going to Common Core? Why does Exxon advertise for millions of dollars in the Masters Tournament last week on the ads for Common Core standards? Where does this come from? Forty-seven states have now done it. If you follow this stuff back, you get back to the corporate educational reform movement, which did Common Core, now in forty-seven states, now they can give one test to everybody, and they're going to make hundreds and millions, and in some cases, billions of dollars.
Thank you.
On your kids.
Ms. Knowles?
Making it worse.
I think I, I think I'm agreeing with Tom and Martine on part of this, but I think the thing that I would do away with is unfunded mandates by both the federal government and state government. We have, take for example, our special education, it's not fully funded by the federal government, it's not even funded up to the percentage that they said that they would fund it. So, I think that pulls money from the district to, that we could be using in other places if the federal government would just fully fund special education up to the point where they said they would. Similarly, we have at the state level, we're about to have a full-day kindergarten, also not fully funded by the state. Soon, PE, also not fully funded by the state. So, while these are all wonderful programs, and I totally agree that we should have full-day, you know, should we have PE, we should have full-day kindergarten, it would be much better if we were able to control how we were spending the money as it came into the district rather than having the government tell us how to spend it and then not send the money that they said that they were going to, so.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Morrison. How can we help our community become more willing financially to support public schools? How can we help our community become more willing financially to support public schools?
Well, I think it depends on what community you're talking about, because there's some communities that can't afford to support their schools, and other communities that can raise a lot of money for their schools. And I think that the schools that are able to raise a lot of money for their school systems should be, should have some of their state funding deferred and go to schools that can't afford to raise money for their schools.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
I think that we've been lucky that we live in Portland and that the community, particularly of voters, have consistently supported our efforts, our educational efforts, and have invested in these efforts locally. The more recent example is the arts tax that is putting, you know, some teachers back in the classroom, and in addition to the bond that, you know, is putting four hundred and eighty-two million dollars into rebuilding our structures. How can we do better? I think that the community engagement that took place in the wrong branch planning that led to the, to the bond is an example of what can we do better in regards to those things, and that we need to do more. The other is to strengthen the partnerships with the different sectors. And to the point of that people do not have enough money, I should mention that sometimes poor people actually invest more in terms of the education of their children than rich people, if we were looking at ratios, by the way. So, we shouldn't discount people just because they put in their five bucks.
Thank you. Mr. Buell?
It seemed to me over the years that sometimes we get better support when we're doing poorly. I mean, look at how we've done the maintenance, and they passed, and we got the bond passed. And that's kind of been the case before, but one of the things that we need to do that I'm talking a lot about is we need to treat the community in a different way. And we need to bring them in at the start, not in the middle or the end of things that have to do with them. The Beverly Cleary situation, we told those people, here's your two options, these are off the table. But they weren't in at the beginning. Same with the Northeast Coalition stuff, we didn't include them well at the beginning of those things. And the other thing is, just kind of the way we treat them, you haven't been to the board meeting and talked two minutes? That's it, two minutes? We don't have dialogue. You need to have dialogue with the community. You just don't tell them, two minutes, your time's up, that's it? That's how we, that's how we handle people in the, who come, citizens who come to the board to give their opinion. That's how we do it.
Thank you. I'm just incredibly grateful to our community for how involved they are with our schools now. I think Martine mentioned the levy that was passed, the bond that was passed, the arts tax. I think our community is very supportive of public schools. Of course, we would all love them to be even more supportive, but I have to say, they are very, very supportive, not only with their dollars, but if you go into any school, you'll see volunteers there every day. The PTA, CPPS, who's here tonight helping us, there are any number of community organizations and groups that I meet with on a regular basis. The new one, the Eighty Percenters, for people who, the eighty percent of us who don't have children in school anymore, I'm very happy to see this group come forward and support us. I think we can do more to reach out to those groups. I am hoping that our processes are getting better with community engagement. I spent a lot of time with the parents from Beverly Cleary last weekend, talking about how we could do better.
Thank you. Mr. Kriller?
Well, we need more resources, and we can do better with the resources that we have. So, that's one way. I mean, I agree, our community is incredibly generous and supportive of our schools. And we need to continually to do better and show results, and then that support will continue to be maintained. But we need more money from Salem, and so it's really, it's an urgency question, it's like, how urgent are we gonna be in this community to get the resources that we need? And it's a priority question. I was just doing a back-of-the-envelope calculation on the amount of money that we spend on defense in this country. And a five percent reduction would essentially give us somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars here in the Portland School District. So, it's a matter of priority in how we spend our money and urgency for us as well.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Gonzalez. And again, I'll read it twice. What is the most important thing that needs to be accomplished with our upcoming teacher contract negotiations? Again, what is the most important thing that needs to be accomplished with our upcoming teacher contract negotiations?
Without, you know, we, you know, it's a challenge in regards to being sitting on the board and having not put forth, you know, or share the contract or the contract proposal with the district, that'll be done on Thursday. And so, I think that from then, we can talk more specifics. For me, I think, you know, and I mentioned this before, the most important thing is to be able to remove any obstacle that is in the contract that gets on the way of improvement, student achievement. For me, those are the most important parts. And the other part of it is to make sure that we remove anything that is in there that also impacts the equity work that we're trying to do in this district.
Thank you. Mr. Buell?
I haven't seen the contract or how, what, how both sides are going, so I can't comment on that. But I can comment on what I think is almost the critical issue to a huge degree, and that's to repair our relationships from the board with the teachers. There's a reason I have the teacher endorsement, the Portland Association of Teachers, and one of the main reasons is because that relationship isn't as good as it could be. Now, Ms. Knowles will sit down and talk to the teachers, but the other people on the school board, no, they'll maybe talk once, but they won't regularly sit down and talk with the teachers. And they need to do that. You need to have that relationship. It's a wonderful group of people. And the, for instance, the letter that was sent out to all the parents, the problem is the teacher's contract. Wait a minute, is that really the problem with the education? That's what it says basically in that letter. You kind of blast your own teachers to every parent in the district. That's not a good way to make a group that can sit down and work together. Those are the people with the experience, and those are the people with the knowledge. You need to include them in your decision-making stuff.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
Thank you. Just to be clear, my colleagues and I are all in the schools on a weekly basis. We all talk to teachers. We all believe that teachers are the most important part of this district, and we want to make sure that we have the absolute best teachers in front of every student. So, our goal with the contract negotiations is to make sure that there's nothing, as Martine said, nothing in that contract that impedes our ability to make sure that the very best teacher is in every classroom. And that includes issues around our hiring, assignment, and transfer, it includes issues around flexibility for the district, so that we can make sure that we are able to have the absolute best teacher. We did some work in our last contract negotiation around evaluations, which helped us with making sure that we could evaluate teachers, help those teachers with professional development that needed it to improve, and we're looking forward to having a constructive conversation with our teachers around this contract as well.
Thank you. Mr. Kriller?
We have an educational system that is based the nineteenth century or beyond, and part of that is a labor management paradigm, which I really think needs to get shifted. And teachers are the key, they're in the classroom, that's what makes the whole thing run. And we need to have a more professional relationship where the teachers are professionals, we treat them like professionals, we pay them like professionals, they're underpaid, and that the relationship is one that changes. And so, I think that our traditional labor management paradigm is not, I think we want to move in a different direction.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
I don't really have an answer to this one.
Okay, thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Steve Buell. How would you handle future enrollment balancing in Portland schools? Again, how will you handle future enrollment balancing in Portland schools?
This comes back to what I talked about earlier, is we need to sit down, get an educational philosophy that's solid. So, we know what we want to teach, kids at different levels, we know how we want to go about it, then we sit down and do the enrollment balancing and try and stabilize our school district, and we're looking at it in more of the long term than what we're doing now. Now, it's crisis to crisis, it seems to be. So, we do that, it'll make a huge difference in how you stabilize the whole entire school system. And how about the grade configurations? Same thing, we need to stabilize those, so they're actually, we decide what we want and make, and try to make it work.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
Thank you. I'm actually quite excited about what we have coming on enrollment balancing. Anyone who's been following the district knows that we've been, that we currently have our student, our superintendent's advisory committee on enrollment and transfer has started work on that issue, and I'm really looking forward to the work that they're going to do. So, we will be working with, we call it SACET, to help inform us and inform the community and engage the community on issues around enrollment balancing and on boundaries. And eventually, there'll be a proposal that comes to the superintendent and the board that we'll look at. But the purpose, of course, is to make sure that we have an adequate number of students in every school, so that we can provide a full program for all of our schools. And, and I think the important part for us to look at is, you know, making sure that we get the community engaged to the full extent, because it will affect every single community in this district.
Thank you. Mr. Kriller?
I agree with what Pam said. I mean, essentially, we need a, the boundaries ought to be based upon a long-term vision, and we should have at least a ten-year framework, and with the goal of having very strong neighborhood schools. And so, and also, what Steve said, we get out of this crisis-by-crisis situation where it's the school of the week, and set our sights on what the long term looks like, and have policies that then feed into that vision.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Well, we obviously need redistricting, and it needs to be done, in my opinion, with equal, as equal as we can to the different financial capabilities of the neighborhoods, and a good mix of those. And also, we have to look at what's gonna be happening, like if a neighborhood's being gentrified or the opposite, if it's being abandoned, possibly turned into some kind of industrial neighborhood, that needs to be considered in terms of what will be happening in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
I think that, you know, one of the things that already got mentioned in terms of Pam, I think that the superintendent advisory committee on enrollment and transfer is due to come back and provide some analysis in regards to the work that needs to be done, and also a proposal in regards to plan. There is not necessarily this, you know, framework that is being put forward in regards to crisis-by-crisis. What it is, is that it's a reality, a political reality that we have in this, in this city. And that is that those boundaries have been in place for a long time, those boundaries were developed, and if you look at them, it looks like the gerrymandering of the South in regards to, okay, I want this go this way. It's going to be, take a truly, a commitment from the full community to be able to say, look, what really makes sense? What really is equitable? And how can we deliver the best possible program by addressing this as a whole? So, it's not a crisis, it's a reality and a political change that needs to take place.
Thank you. So, for the next question, we'll start with Ms. Knowles. What specifically would you favor to increase the quality of principals in Portland public schools? And again, what specifically would you favor to increase the quality of principals in Portland public schools?
I think this is very similar to the questions that we had four years ago around the quality of teachers. And what we did with that was work with the teachers' union to put into place an evaluation system that clearly delineates what good teaching looks like, and hold teachers to that and help them improve. I think we need the same thing for our principals. And I know that the district is currently working on a new evaluation tool for principals. But in any position, I mean, everyone's job, how do you improve? You have, you have clear indications of what the, what's expected of you, you are evaluated on those indicators, and where you fall short, you provide professional development for people to improve. And I think that's what we can do for our principals. We have many, many fine principals in this district, and I'm, I think they do a, overall do an absolutely wonderful job. Of course, we have people who have to improve, as you do in any profession, and we want to help them do that.
Thank you. Mr. Kriller?
Yes, so, couple things. One is, I think we need to institute, and I actually think this practice ought to be instituted agency-wide, but we can start with principals, which is a three-hundred-and-sixty-degree evaluation process, where what that means is that teachers, students, and parents are all evaluating the principal. And what you get from that is consistent yearly information on what's working really well and what's not working so well that we have to improve. So, number one, get that information from the community to the district. Number two, I think we probably need to revisit and look at our leadership development in, for those leaders. So, what are we doing now? What can we do better? And what kind of cultural changes do we need to institute?
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
One of the beauties of being a single-issue candidate is I can bring my subject into anything. So, I will say that I'd like to see principals that are more literate in the science of the biological effects of radio frequency radiation, and that are able to institute classes in safer cellphone use, and are also interested in providing radiation-free zones for kids who need to use computers but are electro-sensitive and can't be exposed to wifi. This is, this is a problem that is going to increase as time goes on.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez? Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
I think that the best way you can improve it is actually hire from the onset the people that are most qualified and actually meet the needs of the district. And so for that, we need to actually improve in regards to our job descriptions so that we actually insert more, you know, that equity lens that we talked about. Because many other times, I think that we need to select leaders, you know, people that are actually going to lead and inspire the people and staff in the building, have the ability to be able to form learning communities. The part, you know, that comes later is the whole thing, and how do you address the people that are already there? And that's where the professional development, that's where the evaluation that Pam pointed out. But it is important and imperative, I think, to make sure that we pair up, you know, those principals that are struggling with those principles, they have a proven track record to increase a student achievement.
Thanks. Mr. Buhl?
One of the problems that we have with principals in general, and in education in general, not just in Portland, is that we're asking them to do two things. And the main two things they do. One, and this is 40 years worth of watching it change, one of the main things they do is make sure their test scores are good. Get those test scores up. That's huge, huge. And the second thing that they do that is also their job is to take top-down mandates from someplace else. Now the new stuff coming in from Oregon and the governor's plan, which doesn't really help kids. And make sure they become the middle people on that. So they pass the things from the top through to their staff. That's the two things they do. Well, if you stop and think about that, neither one of those is make your school better. So we attract, we don't really attract the best people because the job, we changed the job and the job is really not any good anymore. It used to be out there and make your school a better place. What are the problems in my school? How can I work on those problems? We don't do that anymore. And that's the problem, that's the main problem right there.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll begin with Mr. Kurler. Do you consider the Oakes tests to be, quote, "high stakes"? Why or why not? And once again, do you consider the Oakes tests to be, quote, "high stakes"? Why or why not?
Well, I believe that the Oakes tests are going to be irrelevant here pretty soon because they're being replaced. And I think that standardized testing has a role. But the high stakes part of it is when it has consequences that do harm to the schools. So I'm all for testing. It's how you use the information that is the key.
Thanks. Mr. Morrison?
Okay, this is a stretch. I'm going to read a quote from Martha Herbert, who's a pediatric neurologist at Harvard Medical School. EMF, RFR from Wi-Fi and cell towers can exert a disorganizing effect on the ability to learn and remember and can also be destabilizing to immune and metabolic function. So I think without it, kids would be doing better on their tests.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Unfortunately, I'm not a single-issue person. You know, I keep hearing that we're high stakes, high stakes for Oakes testing. And then people talk about results and how we should disregard results. And I can tell you, you know, coming, living in this community for about 24, 25 years now, and the community basically wanted to see results, wanted to see basically, hey, where are kids then? Where are students then? How are they performing? And then, what are you doing with that information to prepare for the next level? The challenge, of course, is that people are saying high stakes, but I yet to see anybody, anybody, get fired for the results of their students. So to me, high stakes is when actually somebody loses their job. This one hasn't proven to be that. There are some potential repercussions, but I yet to see them because the district has managed to actually reconfigure, do other things, and then continue to restart.
Thank you. Mr. Buhl?
The high stakes part is the waste of the time, energy, and money. It's, if you take and use all this time and energy and put it into what are high-stakes tests, the Oakes, and now the next one is the S-Back, which is built around making somebody a lot of money now, back someplace else, not in Portland, by the way. And we're going to spend all this time and energy, money to deal with this situation. That's huge high stakes. We're destroying and damaging kids' education throughout the entire city of Portland, throughout the whole state of Oregon, and we're pushing on doing more of it, more of it. We want to get those scores up, not have a well-rounded, solid education for your child, but make sure those test scores are up. And we focus so much on those that it's obviously high stakes. We also label the schools. Everybody looks to see when the tests come out, so we're going to label the schools. That's the high stakes part of it. And what do we get out of that? We don't get something that helps us teach any better. If you think that, you need to spend the last year and a half working on this program, like we have at Oregon State, our schools, working on looking at the testing.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
So when I hear people say high stakes, I can't quite figure out who they're worried about. Because I don't think it's kids. We use testing in Portland public schools to help us know how our students are doing and to help us know what programs are working, what strategies are working. And then we replicate those strategies and programs in other schools to help our teachers do better. I think that there is a place for testing. I don't think it's high stakes. I think it's a way for us to improve, to help our teachers improve, to help us know which programs and strategies are working in our schools. And that's it.
Thank you. For the next question, we'll start with Mr. Morrison. Please describe how important you feel outdoor school is for creating equity. Are you willing to fully fund a five-day program?
Yeah, I would definitely fund a five-day program. My daughter went to outdoor school, and she said it was the best school experience she's ever had. And I've heard this many times from other kids as well. I think it's one of the most valuable programs that we have in the school and unique too, as far as I know.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
You know, if all the resources were available, definitely I'd be in favor of a five-day program because some of my children have actually participated in it. The challenge, of course, has been, how do we balance that in regards to that need? And how do we, you know, make sure that we continue to support it? And the last round, you know, of economic challenges that we had, we basically, you know, put in some money that we were able to do to be able to maintain it to follow life, to then call on the community to say, hey, if this is truly important, we also need your support in this. I think that we need to continue to do that. We need to continue to have an investment in that part. You know, not looking at the budget right now is hard for me to say, yeah, five days is going to be on the table because, you know, there are other things that are also our priority.
Thank you. Mr. Buhl?
I went to outdoor school for 14 years, and it's a marvelous, wonderful program. It does, kids do say, over and over and over, it's their best experience that they have. And it also teaches some tremendous science, which we're kind of lacking on in the younger grades in Portland and all over now because of the intrusion of other things that aren't as important really to teach. I agree with Mr. Gonzalez in that we need to really go out and try and find the money for that program to put it on top of what we have. If we can't find the money, maybe we need to fund it.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
Well, I'm in total agreement, and I think with everybody here, that outdoor school is a wonderful thing. My sons all went to outdoor school. It was fabulous. And I wish we could fund it fully. But given the other priorities in our budget, that's just not possible this year. But as Martine was alluding to, last year, when we had to cut outdoor school, we worked very hard to find other partners in the community who could step up and help with that. The MESD, the, excuse me, the SD, I think Mount Hood Cable came in on part of it. There were many, many foundations and others in the community who were willing to put some funds into that to help us maintain outdoor school. And as I said, I think it's a great program, and I'd love to fund it.
Thanks. Mr. Kurler?
Well, I look forward to getting on the board and looking at the budget and understanding all the trade-offs. I guess the thing about outdoor school that I don't like is that it's kind of this week-long thing. And then everybody's back in their chairs in their rows in school. So, I mean, I think we ought to just get out of the classroom a lot more than we do. And that's a curriculum, project-based issue, which I feel pretty passionate about.
Thank you. This ends our audience questions. And we'll conclude with a one-minute closing statement from each candidate, beginning with Martine Gonzalez from Zone Four.
Again, thank you for this opportunity. And I hope that I have an opportunity to continue to build on the work that I have done for almost five years now on the board and pushing in regards to the whole issue of addressing the inequities that have been in place to look at improving the graduation rates in our schools and to close the achievement gap. It would be wonderful if there was truly a reality in the statement that Mr. Buhl stated, that, you know, he eliminated institutional racism. If we hadn't eliminated institutional racism, it makes me wonder why we have an achievement gap, why we have a discipline rates that get applied, you know, where students before, you know, like Grant High School, seven times more likely to be disciplined than an African-American student. So for me, those are the type of things that are there that prove to me that there are still inequities and there's still remnants of institutional racism.
Thank you. Mr. Buhl?
Just a quick beginning. Institutional racism that I was talking about is when the institution was actually doing things. Like if you were, they were doing overt institutionalized racism. They were doing racist actions within the school system. If you were black and you sent your kid across town, you had to sign a paper saying that your kid couldn't go back if you bused across town. If you were white, you didn't. That's the type of stuff that I was talking about. Not the racism and the inequity that still exists in the institution. So I thought you probably would have known that. But the difference here, in my opinion, is the difference in these two campaigns. One, are you going to go with the corporate educational reform movement, which is where we're moving? Or are you going to go with getting down into those schools and making them work and spending your time and your energy and your money there? Are we going to spend it on more top-down mandate-type stuff? How is that going to work? For me, that's the huge issue.
Thank you. Ms. Knowles?
So first, let me thank the League of Women Voters for having us all here tonight. You guys do a wonderful job. For four years, it's been my privilege to represent you on the school board. And I think we've made some significant progress in that time, but there's still a lot of work to be done. And none of us would deny that. Our graduation rate is now 63%, up nine points from four years ago. Almost 50% of our students are children of color. And our racial educational equity policy, I think, is helping us ensure that equitable, not just equal services are provided for all our students. Our teachers, the teachers in the district are working together on evaluation and professional development to make sure we have the best student in every, or best teacher in every class, all the best students too. And then we, I also worked hard with the community to pass the local option levy, the local option levy and the bond. And I really appreciate the help of the community in that. You know, Portlanders love their public schools, their neighborhood schools. And we understand the quality of schools are at the heart of every, of everything. So I want to continue to help you with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kurler?
Thank you. I think that our schools and our Portland Public School is the best asset our community has. And it's full of really wonderful teachers, great administrators, incredible parents, a really good board. And I have a background, starting when I was the youngest of six kids, and moving on to Oregon State University when I ran for city council, very applicable to what this job is. I've done community organizing. I've been fortunate enough to help start a few businesses. So I want to bring those leadership experiences that I have to the task of making our schools great. And The New York Times loves to write about Portland. They've written about our restaurants and our chicken coops. I want them to write about our schools, and I think they can. So I want to be part of that.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Well, I'm obviously not here to win. I'm here to be a successful loser and to share a fraction of what I know about microwave exposure from radio frequency radiation and its effect on the child's body. Children are far more susceptible to damage from radiation. There's 60 international organizations that want this out of schools. The LA Unified School District Teachers Union, the British Teachers Union, the Israeli Minister of Health, the Council of Europe, American Association of Pediatric Physicians, and the American Academy of Environmental Medicine. The science is so strong that I would like to challenge the board and Carol Smith and the Safety Department to a debate on the safety of this technology. And I would also like them to sign a paper saying that this is safe and that our children are safe in these schools from a technology that cannot even get liability insurance. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the time we have. We thank each of the candidates for participating in our forum. Thanks again to our partners and timekeepers. Please check our website, l w v p d x dot org for the replay schedule and for additional election information in the League of Women Voters' Voters Guide. This is Malik Heeding for the League of Women Voters. Thank you for watching our candidate forum. Please be an informed voter and make your vote count. Thank you.